All right, well, the meeting's going, Dave. I don't know if you can hear us though, because you're muted. It looks like you muted yourself.
I think I got it now. Are you guys there?
All right. Hello, Dave. How you doing?
Good. How are you, sir? Hey Sylvia, how are you?
Hey. Congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. I got a long road ahead of me, but it's been, uh, it's been pretty crazy already, so.
Good.
But, um, I'm not, I didn't think, I got the idea that Karen wasn't in today. Um, I'm not sure what Ryan's up to, but I want, didn't want to leave the two of you hanging there. So, um, I appreciate you guys' patience.
This might, this might be a short meeting unless Sylvia has any questions or hopefully do you have anything for us? Has anybody came in or talked anything about budgets or what your thought, thoughts are on that?
Well, uh, so the one thing I guess to make the two of you aware of here is it sounds like we did not distribute, um, that letter to department heads about in general fund increases. Um, that would be the one thing I guess to keep in mind here is that, um, while it was a really good idea that we did not, uh, that that wasn't distributed to department heads. So, um, at this point, we have gone ahead and submitted everything, um, that the state requires us to submit for gateway for budgets. And, um, that, uh, it's with the ten percent built in on top. But I think department heads right now are still under the impression, um, that, uh, their submissions for budgets, including increases to general fund will be considered. So that's something to make the two of you and the rest of the council aware of.
Was there, uh, a reason why you didn't submit it and showed it to us?
Yeah, you know, that's a good question, Sylvia. With, with me being out of the office in the last week and a half, I'm not sure where that got, um, where that ball got dropped there. But we'll, we'll, I mean, we'll, uh, at the end of the day, I think looking, there was a lot of departments that did not even submit budget requests for any increases. So I think there's only going to be a few of them regardless that we're going to have to sort through. Um, but we do have a little bit of time in between now and then that we can kind of take a look at that. So I, I don't think it's, it's not a fatal, it's not going to be anything, um, super problematic, but I just wanted to make the two of you and the rest of the council aware that as far as I know that that, um, that that memo did not get delivered to department heads, so.
But a little concern of mine is, um, is that it wasn't done uniformly. Um, and that some departments, we were told that there, you know, it was going to be a tight budget. I know that Andy, uh, and myself have been telling people it's not going to be a whole lot of money.
Everybody I've talked to, Jeff Ballen, the highway, everybody, they, they know for me that I said, man, tighten up because there's not going to be a lot of money here. So I think everybody kind of probably knows.
Yeah, yeah.
Just the idea that.
Yeah.
Send it out just so everybody, even if like you said, uniformly could pay. It's a deal, you know, but.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's probably, uh, accurate there, Red, is that we're in a position here where I think all the informal meetings that we've had, we've, we've made all the department heads aware of the fact that it is going to be very tight this year. Um, so at, at least nobody's going to get blindsided with it. We'll just have to be very calculated, I think, in how we, um, go through that whole process and, um, of, of the budget as always. But I think, uh, I think everybody's been kind of informed though at this point that in all of our meetings that it's going to be pretty tight and we're going to have to be creative with everything, so.
Um, I saw that our growth quotient was four percent?
Yes, that, that, um, and but our growth quotient and our maximum growth quotient are two separate things at this point. Um, I don't have the exact maximum growth quotient here, but that's going to limit the amount that we can bring in on property taxes, uh, for the coming year. So, um, I, I believe what, what we're going to be doing here in the next week is sending out our exact projections to the council members on what we expect the increase to be. And, um, our plan as the, from the auditor's office perspective is to be doing real-time updates to, um, the general fund as we go through each budget so that we know exactly what increases or where we're at with the general fund at a moment's notice. Um, discussions amongst all of our staff and looking back at previous council minutes, that seems to be a reoccurring question amongst council members as to where we're at. So, um, our, our plan is to provide that information to all of you in real time as we're going through the budgets. So that any point you can see whatever we're projecting at, which I think was around one point eight million, um, that you can see in real time where we're at with it. I, I really feel like that's going to be very helpful to the council in terms of making budget decisions. Um, rather than having you guys just ask us for it, that you can see it in real time as you do it, so.
Um, you saw Debbie Gunn's request? Or I think she wanted to go from the eight to the twenty-six to twenty?
People.
People.
So she's.
She sent that, well, she sent the letter to us, I think, July first.
Yeah, I'm supposed to meet with her.
Yeah. Um, I talked to her on the phone and I just told her, I said, my only concern would be first, if you give everybody a five thousand dollar raise, it's about a ten percent raise, rate, you know, pay increase. And it is coming from her own, you know, the nine-one-one fee, I get that, her, her budget. But if we're going from twenty-six to twenty, or maybe twenty-eight to twenty-two regardless, um, you know, I, you know, once, once you give those raises, those, those, you can't take those back.
Right.
But if you need, you know, one or two more people or three people, now we're giving ten percent raises on your budget, but then now we're going to be adding people in the future, if, you know, if, if it's.
Personally, I would not be in favor of that. Uh, they've always, and what concerns me is we gave them some of their employees, if I recall right, um, fairly good pay raises, uh, as an incentive. If you recall in that last budget to, uh, encourage more people to work. And it sounds to me like they're losing, they're not gaining employees. Is that right?
Um, the last that I had heard, the last that I had heard, uh, that they were still hanging steady, um, where they were at. I think they still do have some open positions available, um, but in our last meeting with Debbie Gunn. And I, I, Sylvia, I think that meeting that you have with her will be very productive as well, um, to hear it from Debbie directly as to the training and how they evaluate those employees. That's the one thing I want to make sure that we have a good handle on going throughout this, that we hear from the department heads directly and we're not making, um, we're not just looking at it in terms of employees and numbers, but hearing some of the challenges that Debbie says that she's had with that process. Um, but I do know that they do have some open positions there. Um, but it was very enlightening when she met with us and kind of walked us through that whole hiring process, um, just person to person. So, and it, after your meeting Sylvia with her, if you need to make, if we need to make some time available that you can come by after that while it's fresh in everybody's mind to kind of walk through that, we will definitely make ourselves available. Um, but that, that, I feel like that would definitely be worth a, just a little bit of homework and just kind of hearing it from Debbie directly as to how that goes, so. But we will definitely make ourselves available in the event that afterwards you would like to meet with our staff as well to kind of go over anything that you guys talk about.
Okay, I'll make that a point to, to check with you and them. Uh, but personally, I'm not so much in favor anymore of, uh, when someone leaves to chop up their salary and spread it out.
Um, yeah, that, that's prob, that's been problematic.
Yeah, yeah, and it will come back to bite you.
I think that needs.
Yeah.
Yep. I do too.
Because if, if, if you're not going to use it, it should go back to the general fund.
I agree.
And then when you need it, we'll give it back to you. But we can use that money for one-time things like Lee IT, I'm just throwing something out there. Needs updating or, or, you could use that for one-time purchases. And then say a year, say two years down the road, hey, we need to hire two people. Okay, well, we have it budgeted into general fund, we will give you back your two people. But yeah, we use some of that budget for something else at one time, one time items, one time expense.
I agree. That's, that's been on, a practice, it's getting too common.
I mean, there's been times in the meeting that we approve positions and then they come back three months later, then I go, okay, well, we're going to take this one out and we're going to chop this one. And I'm going, what are we just, what are we doing here?
Yeah, that's exactly right.
We're going to give this one a raise, we're going to take this one out and I don't know, I just, I don't like all that. You know?
But I, I do think, I do think the Sylvia, you doing that, um, that homework outside of the public meeting and making sure that, um, that you kind of get where everybody's coming from, um, and do all the fact finding, I think that is a very productive exercise as well. Just to make sure that we do, we are able to, um, get everything on the table, all the facts out there, um, without having to do it in a, like, a direct budget session with that pressure. Um, kind of giving that space, space for department heads to plead their case. So I, we really appreciate you making time to sit down with her and talk that through as well, so.
I do that. I've been doing it.
I know you have. You've been, you've been doing it.
Nice, I think it's nice that, you know, that she's recognizing that there's six positions and that there's something she can do. I, I, I get that. I mean, listen, that's a start. I, I really do, I appreciate that, you know, um. If I'm the department head, I'm going, okay, well, maybe I use several positions for raises to attract people, keep people, I, I get that. My only, and like I said, I'm not a department head, but, um, you know, it's just one of them things. I, I agree, Dave. Um, I definitely need to sit down with her again and talk, talk with her, you know, about it as well.
It never, it never hurts.
We're discussing nine-one-one and, uh, you want to tell him what, uh?
Yeah, I think.
We're live?
Debbie, yeah, we're live with David Slumsky.
We're, we're.
Hey, Mr. Britner.
I like the person.
Uh, Dave just had a baby, so he's, uh, yeah.
Yeah, and he's put himself to, you know, the.
I just met with Debbie.
Oh, did you? How did that, what, did you get, what did you get out of it? Because I, I, I don't know.
Well, she explained, uh, you, you kind of filled me in a little bit and it was, it was long lines. She wants to, uh, bottom line is she wants to move money, um, into the surcharge of the foundation, uh, for her budget. And she is budgeted for thirty-six telecommunicators. And she is confident, um, that thirty is, um, a good staffing number. She's never been at thirty-six. In fact, uh, I don't think she's been at thirty since she's been there. But she's hovering right around, right now she's a twenty-eight. Um, you know, they've been a little bit lower than that, so she's been hovering around thirty, but they never have a center filled with thirty people. Um, she's very confident that that would be sufficient, especially, uh, you know, they're on the twelve-hour shift. And she gives them more flexibility and those six people would not be, well, vacancies would not be filled. And she wanted to take, I think the savings was, Dave, I don't know. I think so, the savings was close to three hundred thousand and she wanted to take in about a hundred and eighty thousand and give everybody a five thousand dollar raise using, you know, those six vacancies. So it's creative and I give her that. But the same time, what I did say to Debbie, and I'll, I'll share with this group, is that, I mean, she, fortunately, she has funds available to her where she can be creative, such as surcharge money and, and she has these positions that she's been budgeted for but have never filled them. But the other department heads who are challenged as well with both staffing and, you know, retaining people and uh, giving people, uh, raises, they don't have that same type of funding available to them. And, you know, and it's not about really fairness, but it, it was about, you know, yeah, it's good for her department, but, you know, the other departments are looking for the same thing. And I know we've been talking about, you know, at this point, you know, just asking that we freeze raises, freeze additional hiring until we can get our arms around our finances a little bit. Um, now she, uh, I asked her, I said, is this money going to go back in the general fund, some of these, some of this funding? And she didn't, you know, at that point, you know, I don't, she didn't say yes, but it was, well, it's going to come out of, we're going to put it back into the foundation. Money, does that make sense, Dave?
Yep, that does. Yeah, that, that would be, and I think that, um, if she's confident that freeing those positions up, I think, um, that, that is a very, uh, a very creative, uh, gesture on her part. And I, I think, uh, Mr. Britner, you'd be very well, um, educated to speak to this. If, if she feels confident that that kind of staffing is good, um, then I think that, that's a, that's a really, that's a really good, um, move on her part to kind of free some money up. As long as she feels like, if, if there is growth in that, uh, that's just something to be aware of that. Eliminating that many positions, um, that is later on, if there is an influx of a need for hiring, that we would have to revisit that. Um, do you, do you think like getting rid of six people, like, I know those positions are unfilled, um, but at the same time, I, I, it, I hope, I, I, Debbie's got a really good handle on her department. Um, but you might be better versed to speak to that, Mr. Britner, as to whether or not, like, eliminating that many positions might cause, uh, a problem later on, or I just don't want her to be hamstringing the year down the line because of that, so.
Yeah, she seemed to think, um, you know, she seemed very confident that even in the future, to her, so we're not, you know, putting a burden on any of our future, um, whether it's department head or, or council members that would have to address this. She felt pretty confident that, that this, her facility with the call volume, I mean, she did her homework with, uh, with data and statistics. And it comes down to call volume, the thirty was a number she was very comfortable with. I mean, whether it goes up or down a little bit, uh, it usually goes up a little bit, but you never know, I mean, some, some of yours might. Um, she felt thirty was for a long-term, uh, a good number. And, um, so she, she felt good about that. And, um, you know, it's just a matter of, you know, I guess as a council. Uh, and I did ask her, she said that La Porte County, their dispatchers start out like at forty-eight thousand and some change. If I can remember right, and then after they're trained, they go up to fifty-one thousand and some change. And, uh, uh, she said to La Porte County was right around fifty-one thousand. Um, I didn't get a number from Lake County, but she says she's actually getting applicants now coming from Lake County to apply at Porter County. And, uh, to her credit, I'll give her credit too, we had talked about, it's not all about money, but she's working on changing the culture. And I think that's a big, um, part of the puzzle. You know, decent competitive pay and a work environment that is not stressful. We have good supervision, you have, uh, the tools you need to do your job, um, where you're not just stressed out walking in your workplace, you know, um.
Absolutely.
Uh, so she's, she said she feels confident, that's come a long way. So I did, I give her credit on the, uh, oh, what I was going to share with the group is that she said she started working on this, um, after she reviewed one of these Thursday meetings and, and heard us talking about nine-one-one and some of the challenges with the, uh, that we're, we know what we're talking about with the general fund and sustaining our, our funding. So she actually, she listened to the meeting, I guess, after the fact. And that's what got her kind of seeing what we're talking about on Thursdays and, uh, her to start digging in her budget.
That's why I said I'm glad she's digging outside of the box. I go, yeah, I think that's great. It's just a matter of.
I'll share that with everybody, uh, you know, she watched, she watched and, you know, these meetings have been, you know, I think they've been pretty good. Um, getting some good information, but, yeah, I just left her office and, um, you know, said that, you know, it would be a discussion and like I just shared with, with everybody here, you know, I said, you know, I give kudos on your, it's what we had our department has to do, right, is to look and see what they're working with and, um, but now it just comes down to, you know, uh, you know, this excess funding, you know, with the six people, you know, I'm not saying that, you know, that we couldn't compensate nine-one-one, um, but, uh, I think right now, I, I, we just, this is me thinking, it's premature to say, yeah, that's what we'll do with the money. And until we kind of see what, what we have with the other departments, because I know the other departments too are going to be, uh, interested in, um, either trying to get their people some raises or hire people and, and, uh, I think we're chipping away at it, you know, uh.
Yeah.
My opinion then is just, it's the hiring people that has to stop at some point.
Additional people, yeah.
The additional people, um, and I know I feel, you know, bad for Gary since I've started on your council, he gives, you know, those letters of, hey, we, we need to have, you know, two more, five more prosecutors or this or that. And, you know, you, you read the letter and you do understand, yeah, this, there might be any here, but, you know, you're trying to do additional people, you're trying to give the proper pay. So we're in line with La Porte and, and Lake County, so that, you know, they don't steal our, uh, people. You know, we, we don't want to be the breeding ground for trained people and then them go into La Porte or them go into Lake County. You know, I mean, I, I, I do agree in your apartment that if you have good people, you pay them. And you pay them well, you stay, you stay on top of it, so the other counties don't, don't poach us.
Yeah.
So you're saying that you're willing to have her give two people five thousand dollar raises?
I, I hadn't thought about that. I need to talk to her somewhere.
Isn't that what you just said?
No, I said that I think it's something that she proposed. There were no promises made. I think we have to really look at what we're going to have. Uh, because we, we, I think the last meeting, we, we talked about putting a freeze on raises.
I, I think that.
And putting a freeze on additional hiring, our last meeting, we kind of put it out there for the department heads.
I think Andy and I, uh, best was, we've been telling the people we've been meeting with that, uh, you know, very slowly.
We can see what, to look at our own around this budget and see what we have, what we, what we can do and, and what the right thing to do is. We, oh, I'm, I'm just kind of sharing what the meeting was about with her, that what she had done.
Well, I am with it then, so.
And, um, so I give her credit there and, you know, uh, again, I'm just going to say, I think that's what we ask our department heads to try and do, is look internally instead of coming to.
Oh, yeah, a hundred percent. I was happy when she called and.
Yeah.
Slayed it to me, but.
But yeah, as far as this being a done deal, no, no, that's not expressed at all. Um, and, um, I think that as a council, as a group, maybe we would kind of see where we are with raises as the year as we get closer to budget time, but, uh.
Most of the, uh, department heads that I have spoken with are asking for a raise in hourly.
Really?
Hmm.
Let, let me ask you a question.
Truinal retention is wanting fifty thousand?
But didn't they raise their hourly, um, I mean, it's.
Well, I'm, I'm just telling you, that's what I'm.
Not them, I'm just saying, that last budget cycle, I remember it seemed like everybody was going from thirteen to seventeen, from seventeen to twenty-five.
Yeah, they were boosting.
Everybody boosted their hourly up.
They were. She, and what she explained, it's Allison, of course, explained that, uh, to Andy and myself, is that, uh, they have, their employees are long-term employees. They've been there for years and years. And, um, she said something about, maybe you can, uh, clarify, David, that, uh, you pay time off instead of comp time?
Yeah, the difference between PTO and comp time.
And, um, she said that it's getting to the point where she needs to hire some part-time help because the, her paid time off people are, have so much built up, paid time off. She doesn't have enough work. Does that make sense?
What, yeah, what department was that?
Truinal. Truinal, Lake.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, that, that certainly makes sense. I think, uh, I think that kind of goes back to what you guys were looking at earlier this year too about the PTO, um, and just how it's been accruing there. Um, so that's, uh, uh, definitely makes sense how they get there. Um, but I think that's another, that's asymptomatic of what you guys had kind of raised earlier in the year about having concerns about the amount of PTO that's accruing, um, so that's certain.
Comp time or PTO?
PTO time, you know.
Is it different?
Pay time off. They're getting paid overtime, is that what you're saying, Dave?
E- either, either way, basically what you're looking at is that you're paying an individual that's not in the office. And then depending on which office, that someone needs to cover that time that we're paying somebody not to be in the office, regardless with, whether it's PTO or comp time.
Right.
So if somebody goes, takes a month, she's paying somebody to come in and cover it?
Exactly. That's how I.
But.
Can I ask you a question, Dave?
Wouldn't. Yeah.
In, in government, with the comp time and, and the PTO time, wouldn't it be better for us long-term if we did something with our longevity to reward people who've been here for ten, twenty, thirty years?
Yeah, that, so like I get, that's, it's kind of two separate conversations. Um, the big thing, so say if I came in and out, uh, we had people come in an hour early for some training, um, and then made them work the regular day, that would be the comp time part of it. Whereas PTO, people bank PTO, um, as part of what their salary, people get banked PTO. So comp time is basically when they're working over, um, and then they bank that as well and they essentially use it as PTO. Um, but, uh, longevity, longevity is a part of that. Um, and then I think I, the real one here, and I think, uh, uh, Karen would be a really good one to kind of explain how the intricacies of those two different ones work. But essentially, PTO, all, all salaried employees are going to get that PTO. Um, the comp time varies from office to office in terms of what each department head is asking for their staff and, um, whether or not they're having them get overtime or, um, but it, it's a little bit different of an element than longevity itself. Because longevity is like more long-term, PTO is more of a short-term thing, if that makes sense. Does that answer your question?
I'm just trying to. Then what's the standard, how, they were, was it thirty-five hours?
For PTO?
No, for what's like a.
An employee.
Based on thirty-five hours?
Is it based on thirty-five hours a week?
Uh, it depends on the department once again, but for, yes, thirty-five hour work weeks. If I'm not mistaken, I think it's seventy hours of PTO and seventy hours of vacation time. If I'm not mistaken, I think it's seventy hours of PTO and seventy hours of vacation time each employee gets every year. Don't exactly quote me on that, but I believe that's what it was last year, so. But I, I'll, I'll find that out for you guys in the next day and send that out to you so that everybody's on the same page as far as that goes.
So what, how many departments work, say forty hours, how many departments work thirty-five hours, would you know that?
Not off the top of my head, no. But may, maybe that'll be something useful to put together for you guys to consider during your budget hearings is. Um, how each department, at least how their uh, benefit structure goes, so. Um, by next Thursday then, I'll, I'll start putting that together for you guys so that we can kind of look at that as like a quick, quick reference. Um, cause I, I, do you think that's very effective in these meetings is to kind of flush out our questions ahead of the budget hearings? And making sure that we have all that information available for all you guys to make your decisions.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome Sylvia, and then if after, do you, when are you meeting with Debbie next?
I, me, I've got to, I don't know, it'll be soon.
Okay, if you don't mind either, let, letting us know when you do so that we have some time available afterwards, if you'd like to come in and talk about it a little bit more. While it's fresh in everybody's uh, head, um, I, I think having that little follow-up afterward seems to be very good, but. I do appreciate all the work you guys are doing with the, we all do appreciate all the work you guys are doing with the department heads behind the scene. I know it's a, it's a lot of work, but it goes a long way, so.
So Dave, uh, you did get uh, Debbie Gunn's proposal, correct, she sent it to you in your office?
I be, I believe Ryan did, I'm gonna touch base with them after this meeting, so. Um, I'll confirm that with you tomorrow, that we got that proposal.
I, I wouldn't mind kind of hearing the thoughts of the auditor's office on, on.
Sure. And I don't, I don't wanna single-handedly speak for the other two with, with, talking to Karen and Ryan, but um. I, just from where I stand right now, I think that's a very creative proposal, um. And uh, as long as, and, and as long as she feels, I think the department heads. Are the, the best ones to be able to speak to whether or not that's going to sufficiently meet their needs. This year, next year, and, you know, years to come, so.
I was gonna change gears for just a second, still talking about. The nine one one center, but kind of get off of the budget for just a minute, um, if that's okay. I uh, uh, I'm under the understanding, we're gonna talk about this twelve-hour shift. And I'm not gonna put this on you, Dave, this could be something, maybe talk to Karen a little bit more. My understanding, we have two public safety agencies in the county. They're recognized by state statute, that's the sheriff's department, and nine one one is now those dispatchers are considered public safety, is that? Is that what you understand as well, correct?
I, I'm, EMA, EMA might be a part of that too.
Maybe EMA, I don't think, I don't know if they are, um.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Uh, only EMA or EMS, um.
Oh, really, okay.
You can beat them on, but, I, you know, I'm pretty confident, anyway, uh, you have the sheriff's department. Uh, public safety, they went to the twelve-hour shift. And they implemented that first year. And my understanding today is that the dispatch center went to twelve-hour shift and they've been working twelve hours for numerous years. The sheriff's department is getting vacation day for day. If the officer has ten days of vacation. And he had ten days, ten days of vacation while working eight hours. Starting first year or just recently now, he has ten days of vacation of twelve-hour days, is that correct? So, do you understand or do you don't, you're not quite sure?
Uh, yes, yes, I believe so, but then again, I, I would have to confirm, I, I know Karen's got a better handle on that, but that's. That's as far as I understand, correct, yes.
We're pointing to Debbie. Hello, Andy. The dispatcher, the dispatchers under the same shift. Uh, are not getting twelve-hour vacation days, they're still under. Uh, it is, there isn't the same consistency there, and I just. I don't know if that's something that um. Uh, we could look into a little bit more, I don't know if that's a commissioner. Deal?
So, just so I understand correctly, you're saying that, um, while. Nine one one and the sheriff's department are both working twelve-hour shifts, that there's a discrepancy but. In vacation days between E nine one one and the sheriff's department at this point?
Right, and.
Okay, okay.
And uh, I just lost my train of thought there, innovation of that. That, that was something, again, I will, I don't know, I don't, again, I'm not sure where that falls under the council. As much the auditor or the commissioner to.
Yeah, probably a little bit of all three.
I'm just gonna ask you, with, when you get, when you get the uh, payroll information from every department. Um, I, I can't imagine that day, when you get the payroll information from our department and they give you, okay, this individual worked. This individual is on vacation, this individual is old and sick, and we get, so you know what to pay them, you get that, correct? And.
Yes.
All the departments, I know we get, they get paid uh, every two weeks, correct? Yeah.
Correct.
Parts on a two-week payroll or, or is it, and is it possible? For like the sheriff and nine one one to go to a twenty-eight-day payroll? Or do they all have to be the same with, with your office, so I don't know. If you, you know, I don't know if that's something you would be able to know or not, let's just say, for example, nine one one and sheriff. Are public safety. You should be able to have a twenty-eight-day work schedule, if allotted, I don't know how they would get that. But a twenty-eight-day work schedule instead of a uh, eighty-hour work schedule. To give the auditor's office for payroll and under the twenty-eight-day schedule. A hundred and seventy-two hours worked, anything over that would be considered overtime. But under, when they're on a twelve-hour shift, they should be working a hundred and sixty-eight hours, so they're not getting overtime.
Oh, yeah, that's a good, that's a good question, yep, I see where you're coming from.
First of all, if it's doable, to have two departments have a different payroll system, not the system, but timeframe. Or if it has to be all the same throughout the county, I guess I'm just looking at this twelve-hour shift. It's a good thing, I think working twelve hours for a department is a win-win, I think it should save the county money. And I think it should be a good tool for, uh, well Sylvia, have you ever managed a twelve-hour shift?
Uh, no.
It does save the county money, and I will say.
We were told by the auditor, it's gonna cost.
Have you ever managed a twelve-hour shift?
I think though, I think, and I'm not speaking for Karen, that I, Dave, get this on record, I'm not speaking for Karen, trust me.
Right.
Getting on me at the next meeting.
I will say that, you know, in the long run, if it's done, and all I can attest to is the way, you know. Uh, I'm familiar with, that, that we did it, um, and it did save the county money and overtime. Uh, it saved, you don't have to hire as many people because you have more flexibility with the employees that you have in the twelve-hour system. Um, and so those were two factors right there, it was a recruitment tool, uh, individuals. You know, we were able to hire people because we advertised and we worked a twelve-hour shift, that was a very. Uh, it was a shift that a lot of individuals looking toward wanted to work or had worked them before at other places, so. There were a lot of benefits for the agency and then the employee, you know, it helped with retention. Uh, it helped with morale, uh, the employee got more days off and so on and so forth, but. I guess my question to the auditor was, if all the payroll has to be the same throughout the county. Or two departments would be able to do it a little bit differently to accommodate the twelve-hour shift, um. And, the question is, is if we have one department that's working twelve hours. And those employees are getting day for day, should the other department whose public safety that's working twelve hours also get day for day?
Yep, good question, um, I'm typing this up right now, so. I'll, I'll make sure I get with Karen and Chrissy here in the coming days to be able to get a little bit more clarification as far as that goes, but that, that's a very good question, Mr. Brickner.
Okay, well, I appreciate it, that was a still thing that was.
Yep, absolutely.
This, this came, came to light this afternoon, well, what did Karen say about the twelve-hour shift?
Well, that's, I was gonna tell, so what I heard her say was the million dollars was. That he would have to hire four additional officers. And I asked Jeff that and you were, no, because I'm, I want, I, I need more additional officers anyways, regardless if I'm working twelves or, or, or they're working eights.
Yeah, the additional wasn't because of the twelve hours, it was just took more coverage.
Right, right.
What do you recall?
Well, that's, I, I, I thought she said it would cost us more payroll in twelve, am I mistaken?
What I thought.
Yeah, well, or you, Karen, when she gets on that.
Yeah, when Karen, when Karen, it'd be good to ask her, because that's, you know, if it saves us, I'm always, and it saves us money, uh. Uh, which I have something to say later on in regards to my, my table, but anyway, um. You know, if it's twelve-hour, save this money, yeah, it doesn't save this money, but you're the expert on this.
Yeah, that's why I always turn the mic, cause I'm not into that.
We, when we converted, that was, that was the whole presentation, you know, what, um. That, uh, it's gonna save money in activity-generated overtime, you aren't gonna have employees. Uh, where if an incident were to happen, you know, you, you never know, I mean, it could happen, but you can have more time to get your work done. And then you have flexibility because you have people coming on, um, earlier. You could have, we, we used to have one officer instead of working, uh, let's just say, you had a shift working seven A to seven P. And um, we would, and then you had the officer, the next shift come on, seven P to seven A, that was your review shift. So we would have, I'm sorry, go ahead, we would have an officer or two come on at six o'clock and work a six to six. So let's just say you got that six-thirty PM accident involving four cars and. All kinds of stuff going on, you got that end of the shift, activity-generated, over time, where. So now you have the flexibility with the twelve hours to have those people, the officers that were coming on an hour early. And working the six to six, they would take those calls, so the person that, they could go home at seven o'clock, they weren't.
Yeah, so.
It, it didn't, it didn't eliminate it, but it drastically reduced what we were having paying overtime for, um. For activity that was happening toward the end of the shift because we had the flexibility, so that was one plus, the other plus was that. We could provide better coverage without having to hire more employees. Um, because you had everybody working on the same day and you had everybody off on the same day, you didn't have this staggered. You know, if, if we were, if it was Sylvia, you and Red and myself, we were a shift. Now, I would be off on, let's just say my days off Tuesday, Wednesday, Sylvia would be off Wednesday, Thursday. You might be off Thursday, Friday, so every, there's only four of us working. Cause every day of the week, there's somebody off, for a twelve-hour shift, the entire shift is off the same day. So you, all four of us would be working, I'm trying to make it sense. If we were scheduled to work on Monday, we're off for work on Monday, if we're off on Wednesday, Thursday, we're all off Wednesday, Thursday.
So how many days a week do they work?
Well, it's a, I mean, we're a hundred, we work a hundred and sixty-eight hours on twenty-eight days, so really. If, you can't really put days per week, because the schedule would be. Let's just say, they would work a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, they're off Monday, Tuesday.
And I think that's where the, the confusion comes in, how, how is that overlapping of coverage? Because see, then after working three days, that's thirty-six hours and four hours more, you're in overtime, so I think that's when the confusion comes in.
Yeah.
And we probably saw it on the chart, it probably makes more sense.
Yeah, and the coverage, um, and, and again, I was just talking to Dave, I think before we walked in, we were talking about. Instead of going with hours, we want to stay with days, Andy, let's just say you had earned yourself, you know, ten days of vacation. You've been here a couple of years, you got ten days vacation, and then, and then I as administrator, I said, hey, starting in January, you're gonna start working twelve-hour days. You know, you're going from eight hours to twelve hours. Um, so you say, okay, uh, so. Is it fair to say, okay, you said having ten days vacation, now you're gonna have six days vacation? Because, you know, you, you, you're, you're only getting, you know, eighty hours of vacation, so wait a minute. You know, that, that's not right, I'm working twelve-hour days, if I take a day off, that should be a twelve-hour day. If I take a vacation day, you know, I'm, I'm getting, I'm losing out on my days, yeah, my hours are. Uh, so we said, okay, you, ten days vacation, we're going to twelve hours, you still have ten days vacation. Ten twelve-hour days, and we did the cover, the coverage will be taken care of, I mean, we were able, we had enough people, we managed the coverage. And the officer was like, this is the greatest thing in the world, it was a win-win, because now the officers felt they weren't getting screwed. By losing vacation days, and then, you know, the agency was like, well, okay. The officers love this shift, they're not gonna quit to go to Portage or to go to another department, they might go to the FBI. But they're not gonna quit to go another department that's not working twelve hours, we put it on our website that we're doing a twelve-hour shift. And it's a day-for-day for vacation, we, we had more applicants, they said, why did you apply here? Well, a couple of things, you know, you're accredited and you work a twelve-hour shift, those are the two top things that were part of our recruiting tools. And we had more applicants and we knew what to do with, so, but it just took some, it was a trial basis, we tried it for eight months. And then we went to everybody that says, you know, what do you think of the twelve-hour shifts, if you take it away, we're gonna quit. We're, it's gonna be a mutiny, we, we.
Are you talking about Portage County?
It's Battle City, when, when we did it, and it's the same shift that Ballin is implementing with his people. And I've been talking to sheriff, if they took it away now, they've only been doing it six months. He says, if they took it away now, it would be, it would be a nightmare, the officers love it. Um, it's helping with getting recruiting, you know, I think we're not gonna lose officers to other police departments. It's cutting back on our overtime, all the things that the model that we use is now coming to fruition. With the sheriff's department, just this last six months, talking to sheriff. And I guess my question today was, is if it's working with the county and it's, it's helping us fiscally. It's helping us with personnel and better coverage, those are all the things that we want. Um, and then the sheriff, it's helping with recruiting, you know, it's helping with morale. Um, is that the same thing we could do with nine one one, cause they're working the same twelve hours. But they aren't getting that same benefit of a day vacation as a twelve-hour day. And uh, I don't know where it's been discussed or how that was decided, I guess I'm just kind of throwing it out there for the group. Uh, and I say we can make that decision by this one or, well, shouldn't there be, there's some consistency.
They're getting hostile, or they're being hostile.
Same benef, we would get the same benefits, I would assume, from nine one one. She's already talked, if they can go with less dispatchers and do the same job, if they can retain their dispatcher and not lose them. To other agencies, that's a win, and the morale is better, we have people answering the phones during the protocol incident that are. Not upset about being at work, that's a win.
Well, you should bring Debbie up, I, uh, I was on the phone with her this morning.
I met with her today.
That was, okay, and, and she had mentioned something about, uh, I wanna talk to you about shifts. And I said, okay, I said, would you wanna meet, so we got Dave, we're gonna schedule a meeting, some of the stuff she wants to talk about. So it's funny that you should bring that up, cause she had, had mentioned shifts, and I think maybe this is what she wanted to talk about.
Well, I'm just gonna share with the group, uh, again, all I can attest to is what I'm familiar with and what we did, I. And it was, it was very successful, and it didn't really cost, it didn't cost the city money, additional money. In fact, we thought it was a savings of a long time.
I, I think what my brain is having a problem with is, I, I'm using the model of the hospital. Uh, my ex and my. Uh, my ex and my daughters that work in the hospital, different hospitals, they all have twelve hour shift. But if they work twelve, they get paid forty. Okay, they get four, forty hours, twelve, so I guess maybe that's why I'm going, wait a second, if they're working twelve hour shift, that's thirty six, what about the other? Or do they work the day half day, or do, with twelve, they work and do they get paid forty, so that's not the same, but it's a different model, I think.
Different, it's a different pace schedule.
A, a different pay schedule, and so, having see that on paper for me would make it a lot easier than that, well, yeah, we're saving money. By all means, but.
I guess that was my question to Dave and the auditor, which I don't expect the, you know, but just something if that is. If that's a possibility, Dave, for the.
Yeah, yeah, no, I'm, I'm taking good notes here on your questions here and, um, you know, I, I don't.
We might not be able to do that in the county, I don't know, I don't.
Well, if she does.
Yeah.
She's gonna have to probably, I would imagine, make sure she has thirty two people instead of thirty people. They're taking more time off. She's gonna have to cover that time off with somebody, right?
She's covering it now.
No, but.
They went to twelve, they can work in twelve hours.
But you're saying if she's getting.
Twelve hour shifts now.
If she's getting more vacation though, if they get more PTO time, would that would like balance them on.
She said they wouldn't, they, you don't need to hire people for coverage. They really don't, um. The coverage, the coverage will be there. And, uh, it, it's kind of hard maybe to explain with. Uh. In fact, you don't have to, you don't, you, 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 you kind of work, do more with less. Uh, that will, like, I don't really like that saying. Though, you know, you have, yeah, we all heard it before, but, um. And, uh, I mean, when we were told, you gotta do more with less, we said, okay, then we gotta, we're gonna go to call our shift. And, uh, the cover, we, the, we had the coverage without hiring additional personnel and. Um, you know, the dispatch center and the sheriff's department is, the same way, that's that same model, so you don't, you don't need more people for the coverage. Uh, for time off, um. So I'm just kind of throwing it out there to kind of just.
No, that, they're great questions, uh, Mr. Brickner, and, um, I, I got everything kind of written down here that you just brought up and I'll do every. Um, in the next, by the next budget meeting we have here, um, we'll work to put something together for you to kind of. Make sure from our end that everything's kind of, that you have all the information available to you to make that decision, so. But it, that, it's a very prudent question, I think. Um, we'll definitely get that cleared up here in the coming days for you guys.
What, yeah, and David, if you could. I, I would, I would like a breakdown of. Of the cost, if there's any difference. If there's, uh, or if there's a savings. Of, uh, just what it is. Um. What, if there's a saving and if there's a cost. You know.
Mm-hmm.
Plus or minus on this.
Yeah, and then, and then how it relates back to even, uh, you know, vacation, PTO and all that as well, comp, yeah, so. No, I, I, I hear you, I hear everybody loud and clear there, so, um, we, we'll work to get that together for you guys, so we can. All be on the same page as far as that decision goes, so.
And I'm just wondering, um. Of course, those two departments are unique. And, you know. Um. They require so much, uh, training and so forth, but is there gonna be any other? County departments, say roads. Are they going to be saying, hey? Maybe we should go to this. I mean, I don't know.
I wouldn't think so, not with roads. Just doing the fact that. Six to six in the morning, I don't know, I mean.
No, in the wintertime, if they.
I mean, maybe plowing, they, they do the plowing, I imagine they do the plowing, it snows. I'm sure they have a good conversation. On how they get their time off and all that, they're working, you know, fifteen hours a day.
Yeah, but see if they're working extra hours on an eight hour shift. And it snows, and they have to put an additional four, as opposed to working twelve hours a day, I think, let's see what you're thinking of that.
Well, cause, um. Well, I think, and what it really shows that, there's some of those. Snow guys that, uh, they were born in twelve.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You know.
And then, yeah, come snow time, they're working.
Yeah. They gotta do what they gotta do. Um.
I gotta get my stuff from Bowman.
Yeah, no, tho- those are excellent questions, um, and I have everything written down here, and we'll, we'll get that clarified so that we can kind of revisit this next Thursday when we all meet. Um, and kind of clear that up, so I appreciate everybody's home. Or, uh, willingness to kind of do some legwork on that, and, um, we'll definitely get everything cleared up for you guys, so we can. All make the, we have all the information available to you that you can make that decision, so.
And I just have a hard time with the. Twelve hour, what would be eight, well, twelve hour shift with the PTO time off or this and that, because. In the, the private sector, we're eight, I don't know, eight, nine, ten hours. We get vacations, it's a day, a day's a day. So, it's just, where we work ten hours a day at the office, you get two weeks vacation? It's a day, you know.
That's right.
You know. We never go, well, hey, we worked fifty hours this week, so we need more, you know, I, I, and I know it happens, I'm sure it happens all over places, just in our, in the gym, I mean. You know, the iron worker, don't even get vacation days.
No, they don't.
No, you don't.
You don't show up and work, you don't get paid.
They don't get paid, exactly, so, yeah, it's a little different, uh. You know, everyone's got their own little. Unique things, how they do things, so.
Question, do we have room, uh, for something that, that was brought to my attention by Mike Jable yesterday?
All right, it is.
He would like to make a lateral move of money that's not gonna cost us anything. Because he lost somebody. Okay? But he said under. He lost somebody and that, uh, he wanted to move some money to pay, he, he was explaining to me, yes, I said, you gotta come before the council, okay? It's a little complicated, but let me ask you this, Mike. How much money is it gonna cost us, let me just flat out, get, let's cut to the chase, what's it gonna cost us? He says, not a dime, I said, you have my approval, because you're gonna, if you can give monies from. Pocket A to pocket B and not cost the council money, I'm all for that. And so he said, well, I'll, I'll explain it more in detail, but he says, the only difference that I'd need, because it's. Said something about code, by code, he needs five votes, not four. And I said, what you're saying and explain that, that it's not gonna cost the county anything? I said, I'm pretty sure, you, you're gonna get a seven oh, because if it's not costing us anything. And you're able to keep up your employees and make them happy with the money that you have. And not your socks on.
Always do what.
See wanting to do.
Uh, uh, he, uh, somebody's letting go, he's gonna change it from salary to hourly.
Was that the, the GIS mapping person by?
I think so. But, when he told me, my, I was dealing with my, my wife, I had picked her up because her, her ball joint had busted in the middle of the street while she was driving.
Yeah.
So, I gave, I had a lesson. Yeah, she, she.
When I met with, when I met with Mike, I was impressed, um.
Hello. Uh, we should be done in.
I'm just gonna set myself right here.
Okay.
Guys, don't mind me.
No, we're good, no, we're good.
Thank you.
When I met with Mike, um, Jable, I liked how he. Had his org chart, he had his own org chart, how everybody's gonna, you know, instead of kind of how it is now, I think it's very clear, like, here's the department, boom, here's yours, here's Stormwater. Boom, here's. Yeah, good, that's right, I told him, I said, I'm more of a visual person, I like to see what, what. What you're doing, but he told me it wasn't gonna cost him, he was moving some positions around, you know.
You know, Peter to pay Paul.
Said, well, when I see it, I'll look at it.
Well, I haven't yet to see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I.
It, it sounded good when he told it to me, but like I said, half my ear was toward him, the other half was my ear saying, what are we gonna do, we're a car short, man. She was sitting right there, probably, yeah, we're in the county, uh, uh, council office, they're trying to get a car.
Does this GIS person? Get part of its pay from the auditor?
I think so.
Not any, not right now, it's all, he, he gets paid, uh, I think out of the planning commission and, um. It's, it's all stormwater based funds right now.
Well, stormwater, that's.
So when did that change?
Um, it changed, I think about ten years ago, when he moved from the auditor's office up to, uh, the plan commission. It was like ten or eight, eight or ten years ago.
Budget, I thought in budget hearing. That the auditor, part of her, part of, uh, the budget was to pay the GIS person.
Um, we have a GIS person within our office, but if you're speaking to Mike Jable, who's Chuck, Chuck is the head of GIS up there. We have GIS in our office, but Chuck. Okay.
I understand that, but it seemed to me like the GIS person was actually maybe getting paid by two or three departments.
Um, uh, he's paid by two or three funds, but I think it's all under the Stormwater Department at this point.
You also mentioned something about they generate their own funds?
Stormwater?
Uh.
Yeah, they're, Stormwater fees and all that. I mean, they, they, yeah, they have a variety of different, uh, revenue producing funds there. Um, but as far as I know, they don't take anything from the general fund. That whole department does not.
Be interesting and things I think that follows.
But, I mean, if, if you can move money around and not cost us a penny, then everybody's happy. You know, I, I can't see. Why not? You know, I mean.
You gotta be careful with that, though, as, as long as you're saying. If you can move money around in your department, but. If they give raises, those are always ongoing, so.
Right.
Be very careful.
It's not a ring though.
Yeah.
It's not a ring.
Um, that's the only thing I get worried about when people say, well, it's my money, we can do this, we can do that, it is, but. When you're giving raises, they, they, they keep going, and, you know, if it's a one time thing, I have no problem with that, so, but.
Over a few years, and a couple of other rates, you know, as well, I.
Yeah, or, or more people.
Or more people, yeah.
It just, uh.
So.
Yeah, well, I, you have to see. What it follows.
I have one more question that I have to go to another meeting.
I think we're being forced out too.
Yeah. That's why I told her five, but go ahead, what's up?
Did, uh, did the group, and maybe, did, did, did the group receive a, an email? Uh, from somebody who got a flat tire or some damage about.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is there, um. You, you simply know of a process? For something like that, if it's, you know, I, I'm not.
I would imagine, it's just thinking, when the county hits your mailbox, or if they take out your mailbox, I think they replace it.
Sometimes.
It's an insurance policy through, uh, through the highway department, as, uh, the best I, as far as I understand it, it's through the highway department. For that kind of damage, they have an insurance policy, but the county doesn't pay it directly.
So they would, so we would contact Jim Blair and say, hey, somebody's complained that their, you know, vehicle got.
Well, is there a hazard, number one, first of all?
Well, that has to be identified, let's say there's a big puddle that's two foot deep and you got eight people that. Right. You know, in, in one day, yeah, we go fill the puddle, but I would imagine. The county or somebody would reimburse, help reimburse the people that got.
I didn't know if there was, yeah, I didn't know if there was, uh, first of all, you know, if it was just. This person saying that this is what happened, like pictures or.
Right.
But I didn't know if there was a process to kind of direct this person to be right.
I think what, uh, David said, that the, I would have directed him to, uh, highway department, but.
Yep, highway.
No, if there is a hazard.
Okay.
You know, maybe they had a, a vehicle that was. Running was kind of bad and they hit a small puddle. That breaks it, I mean, if it's, if it's like, it's a small puddle, we have puddles and we got ones that, you know, here in, in County Devil's follow a car.
Was it a?
I'll tell you what, though.
Didn't say what it was.
Yeah, I just said a hazard, I thought, or something.
It just had been a road work where there wasn't a clone.
Yeah, there was road, yeah, that's.
So.
Assuming that it's on a county owned road as well, that, and it's not in the city limit as well, that, that'd be the number one question, is where did it happen to? But I'll, I'll definitely get that clarification from Mr. Blair.
Well, how about if I direct? This, uh, individual to, uh, the, uh, Poleric.
I don't know if you saw the updated email.
Well.
Then, I believe Joy answered her back, and she said, hey, the county council does, is the fiscal body. But, um, I think she said you need to fill out this.
Oh.
Map it, and I think she directed him to, uh, Jim Blair, I believe, I've double checked that, but I think, maybe she would just.
Yeah, that's.
For you to send out. Yeah.
That probably wouldn't hurt for you to, to write the individual, knowing that the council responded.
Directed him to.
I, I responded, said, I, I looked into it.
Yeah.
Let me check with Joy.
That's, it's a good thing for all you guys to know for future reference as well, how that works, so, I'll, I'll, I'll double check with that. To make sure I get clarification, but as far as I've understood that, um, that they reach out to highway directly. To get that rectified, so.
Email, email if you guys had, from the guy who was saying about public safety tax, he wanted it. And he said the county should adopt it, and so I looked where he lived, he lives in Peachtree language, it's here in Valparaiso.
Yeah, that's, so, in the city.
So, you know, that, that, he wants, if, if we were to. Listen clearly, I'm not saying I want it, I'm saying, but if it were to have a public safety. Tax. Would it be countywide, including Portage, Val, or just the county?
It'd be countywide.
So.
Everybody in the county.
Cause the city's already have it.
No.